A majority of the board is present. Therefore, a quorum is present and the meeting is qualified to consider the agenda items. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to remind everyone who wishes to address the board to sign up with the clerk at the end of the table on my right, Ms. Cindy Hutchings. There is a five-minute limit and we will hold that cap hard this evening. If you've been here in the past when I've said that, I've had to deliver on it and I had to gavel off young children. It was very difficult, so I do mean it when I say we will end the mic at five minutes. There won't be any more speakers' requests accepted after we approve the consent agenda. And we do have chairs here for the speakers in the front and I'll try to call five people at a time so we can keep things moving. Before I consider a motion to adopt the agenda, Dr. Gist, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam President, there are a couple of changes to tonight's agenda. I would ask you to please withdraw items E6 and E7. These will both come back to the Board of Education on a future consent agenda, a future meeting. On item F1, if you could please change the second sentence of the rationale to read. Further recommend entering into an MOU with Northwest Evaluation Association to provide an adaptive assessment for Spanish dual language and the word should be immersion students in K through second reading and math. So, just a word correction there. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. With those corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 I want to welcome everyone and thank you for being here tonight. I know we have some special visitors. Ms. Faith's going to introduce.
Yes, we're very pleased to have Troop 222. I'm going to make sure I get all the number of twos in there from John Knox Presbyterian Church. And would you all please stand? We're very pleased to have you here and I'm glad you got to meet with President Schreiber before our meeting.
Yes, thank you, Troop 222. 222, stop. They asked difficult questions. They're all qualified to be on school board and I told them I hope tonight's meeting would inspire them to run in the future or be a part of their community in the ways that they are already doing. So, thank you all for your service. I know Dr. Gist has a special presentation this evening and I will turn it over to her for that.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, everyone who's joined us in person, on Facebook Live, and any medium that you've been able to join us. I want to share a couple of glimpses into some events that took place over the last few days. Up first, the Unity Learning Academy hosted their ribbon-cutting ceremony on Thursday, August 16th. And you may remember, or I'll remind you, that was the night, one of the nights where we had incredibly torrential rains, but that rain did not deter the community. It was absolutely packed. We had to move it inside, but it was awesome. Our Board of Education member who represents that community, Board Member Marshall, was there. We also heard from a teacher from Unity Learning Academy who's been teaching at Unity Learning Academy for 30, this will be her 31st year, so that was pretty awesome. And then we had several of the community partners who've been engaged with the school for a long time. Nancy McDonald has been a proud supporter of the school since the 1980s. Bob Darby of Darby Equipment has been a partner for the last four years. And then Chad McLean from Graves McLean LLC, they have adopted several schools in the city and provide backpacks and school supplies for every student in the school and that happened that night as well. And then I also want to extend a thank you to Board President Schreiber for coming to that event. And we have just a quick glimpse to give you a flavor for what that was like.
I am so proud of this community.
I think this is awesome. This has been an awesome event. This has been an awesome time. This is something that I wasn't sure if it's ever going to happen, to go ahead and change the name to something that more represents what this community is striving to be, be more like, which is to have unity.
I'm excited for my, about my new teacher.
We're striving to have an identity that we want everyone else to understand and know about. A lot of times, this community has been forgotten and so what this represents is us coming up and coming together and making us a bigger part of the conversation to this city.
It was a really special night. And then this past Friday, we had an opportunity to celebrate the Dolores Huerta Elementary School. We also had incredible attendance from this school community, including the community leader who is known as the Huerta of Tulsa, Yolanda Charney. So, a special thank you to our co-hosts, the Tulsa Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, President Ivan Alvarez, and member James Sanchez. And then our partners at Sedexo who supplied the T-shirts and the refreshments for the event. Of course, I want to thank and recognize Board Member Shawna Keller who chaired the committee of the school that she represents there, and also Board Vice President Cindy Decker for attending. The Graves McLean LLC hosted this event as well with donated backpacks and school supplies for every family there at Dolores Huerta. And a special thank you to one of our speakers, Francisco Trevino, who is the Director of Casa de la Cultura and former Director of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. The partner, one of their partners, which is Arvest Bank, was also in attendance and they were represented by Executive Vice President Kim Adams, Senior Vice President Rita Garrison, Business Development Officer Andy Shapa, and Business Development Officer Jorge Ibarra Machuca. And Arvest donated $2,500 that evening to Dolores Huerta Elementary School and we have a short clip of that event as well.
We are so excited.
You know, I do like it.
Dolores Huerta, you know, is just a national leader, a well-respected leader that fought for the rights of immigrants and farmworkers. To us, it just makes our life a lot better.
I like the name and, because I like the name of the school.
Arvest Faith has been generous enough to give $2,000, $5,000 more to our students.
Si se puede.
And I can't wait to see what the year brings because it's not only a great staff we have, but we have the best school community in the city of Tulsa.
So, big congratulations to, yes, to these school communities, the school leaders, teachers, students, board members, community partners, and so many who have been a part of these schools and making them what they are for quite some time and continuing to support them. Tomorrow at 5:00, we have the unveiling of the Wayman Tisdale Fine Arts Academy and this event will include an unveiling of new building signage, a ceremonial ribbon-cutting, and brief remarks from members of the school, the district, Tulsa Mayor G.T. Bynum, Regina Tisdale, who is Wayman Tisdale's widow, Weldon Tisdale, and William Tisdale as well. And we're excited that businesses have partnered to provide school supplies and backpacks for the students at Tisdale Fine Arts Academy as well. We also want to celebrate our days of service. We have, in leading up to the start of our schools, we have had people all over the city from the district office as well as the Tulsa Fire Department and the United Way, and volunteers have converged on our schools to help get our schools ready, to help organize materials and supplies in the office, but also to help get classrooms set up and help teachers with everything from organizing books, setting up bulletin boards, and so forth. And so, that's just been a great way that we are trying to really display our sense of service that we want to make sure is pervasive throughout our district. So, we had 200 district employees providing support across 17 schools and between now and Wednesday, when school starts, we'll have another, at least 150 folks volunteering their time, including from community partners. So, it's awesome to see people coming together in service of our children and really in support and with love for one another. So, that concludes our special presentations, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. From there, we will approve the minutes of August 6th, the regular meeting of the board, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none regarding the minutes, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
Abstain, I wasn't president.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, I wasn't president.
Aye.
Aye. From there, we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move, approval?
Second.
Any discussion regarding the consent agenda, Dr. Decker?
Thank you, President Schreiber. So, as I heard at the beginning, we're removing E6 and E7 from the consent. Does that, because E7 is linked with E8, I'm just wondering if E8 should also be removed?
It would, Mr. Wade, I would make the assumption that it should be removed as well, referring to CAPTOLSA because they are all part of the same RFP process.
So, are you saying when we were making the list of what needed to be removed, that that one was inadvertently left off?
Inadvertently left off.
Is that okay to add that?
Yeah, what, and that's fine, you can remove E8. What I would suggest, rather than go back to the item where the board adopted the agenda was for the present, would be for the present motion to be withdrawn and another motion be made to approve the consent agenda, except for item E8.
Is there a motion to withdraw the motion on the table?
I will make the motion to approve the agenda with item E8.
At this point, we're just withdrawing the motion on the table.
Oh, withdrawing, okay, I make a motion to...
Is there a motion on the table to withdraw?
I make that motion, yes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of withdrawing the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
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 Aye. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with E8 removed?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda without item E8? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Faith?
Aye.
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 Aye. That brings us to our action agenda. So, we'll start with F1. And the recommendation there on F1 is to amend the agreement with Northwest Evaluation Association approved on the June 18th, 2018 agenda to include the purchase of products and services for MAP assessments. Further, recommend entering into an MOU with Northwest Evaluation Association to provide an adaptive assessment for Spanish dual language and immersion students in K through 12, K through 2, reading and math. And the rationale for the recommendation is a program included in the original agreement will no longer be included on the State Department's approved assessments for the Reading Sufficiency Act by the end of the current school year. Therefore, the agreement is being modified to remove the older program and replace it with the more current version. Are there, is there a motion to approve item F1?
Second.
Any questions on item F1? Dr. Decker?
Thank you, President Schreiber. On F1, I just wanted to ask about the program that's no longer included on OSDE's approved assessment list. And it might be related, but it might not, so I'll also just ask about the additional assessment we're adding and whether some children will now be assessed in Spanish.
Dr. Decker, so the assessment that's being removed, we learned this year, for this school year, at the end of the school year, that CPAA will no longer be on the state-approved list. And we have an opportunity to begin using NWEA MAP Spanish reading assessment early, which gives us an opportunity to better align with our current assessment suite. And so, we chose to make the transition so that we have a year of opportunity to study. Currently, CPAA offers the assessment in K through 2 Spanish. This gives us an opportunity to build into the NWEA MAP suite that we already have, 3 through 10. So, that's the rationale.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other questions regarding item F1? I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
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 Aye. Item F2, increase the annual rate of apprentice teachers from 25,000 to 30,000. Additionally, increase the number of days worked from 176 to 186. Individuals covered by this agenda item work directly with our students as a classroom teacher while working toward the completion of their teaching certificates. The apprentice teacher's position plays an important role, obviously, in the classroom. Are there any, or is there a motion to approve item F2?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Keller?
I have a quick question. How many days are our teachers on contract?
Our teachers are on 176 and some are on 184 and it depends on whether or not they have extended school year. So, we've got two, multiple schedules, but 176 and 184.
So, the additional 10 days then would be used for additional training and teacher preparation?
Yeah, so the additional days will give us an opportunity, as you know, we have Tulsa Teacher Corps. And part of the rationale is that it allows for us to extend the number of days over the summer to provide the training that's necessary so that largely, this is a space where at the beginning of the year, when we're bringing on teachers, they've got a period of time before, you know, we receive like all of their credentials and so they're, the state allows for us to place them in apprentice roles and this will give us the opportunity to train and develop them over a two-week period longer than other teachers.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding FT? No further questions? I'll call for the vote. Ms. Faith?
Aye.
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 Aye. Item F3, rename the school that prior to its name rescension effective July 1 was known as Robert E. Lee Elementary to Council Oak Elementary School. This name change will be effective August 20th upon the conclusion of the regularly-scheduled board meeting. I will read the rationale. On March 15th, 2018, as an extension of Tulsa Public Schools' ongoing work to ensure that district buildings and sites have names that reflect the district core values of equity, character, excellence, team, and joy, the board rescinded the school name of Robert E. Lee Elementary. On May 7th, 2018, the board voted 4 to 3 to accept the nomination of Lee School to be effective July 1, 2018. After individual reflection as well as feedback from constituents and school community members, the board voted on June 18th, 2018 to postpone the effective date of renaming Robert E. Lee Elementary to Lee School until August 6th, 2018. During the postponement, an ad hoc committee composed of parents, alumni, teachers, students, and school and district leaders conducted the work necessary to develop a nomination for a new name for the school prior to the 2018-2019 school year. To arrive at its recommendation, the committee initially considered more than 100 potential names. After discussion and deliberation, the committee narrowed the list to five name options and created multiple opportunities for both members of the school and larger community to share their feedback on those five. Additionally, the ad hoc committee considered variations of those five final names that included the word "Lee." Ultimately, the ad hoc committee supported the final nomination of Council Oak Elementary School as the new name for the school. Council Oak, the historic site at which in 1886, the Muskogee Creek Nation held its first council fires after being forcibly removed from the southeastern United States, is located northwest of the school building and both are on the same creek allotment of Wahili Naharki. Council Oak represents the historic founding of Tulsa and symbolizes hope, the strength of the school community, and the value of perseverance and unity in working to build a brighter future for children. I'll entertain a motion to approve item F3.
So moved.
Second.
Before board comments or questions, we'll have our speakers. We have several on this item and I will call the first five, if you'll come forward, Mr. Larry Williamson, Scott Pitcock, Andrew Crabtree, Aubrey Flowers, and Adam Dolinsky.
Good evening, Board. My name's Larry Williamson and I'm here to ask you to please name Site 265, the Robert E. Lee Elementary School. You know, Samuel Adams once said, "That it doesn't take a majority to prevail, but rather an irate, tireless minority keen to set brushfires in the minds of men." Today's radical activist Marxists are using many tactics to attack and destroy America because they're a small minority of our country. One of the fundamental strategies to divide, one of the fundamental strategies they're using is to divide us Americans into small groups by driving wedges of race and class envy between us. They pit citizens against the police, rich against poor, Republicans against Democrats, black against white, et cetera. And a specific tactic they've been using in the last six or eight years is a nationwide campaign to discredit, disrespect, and dishonor great people in America's history by tearing down their monuments and memorials and removing their names from our institutions, including school buildings. A member of your board told me that the renaming of Tulsa schools this year is absolutely not a part of this national movement. I was assured that it's rather, it's a purely coincidental, isolated action taking place in, you might say, a political vacuum. I would say the timing is suspect. The same movement, the same process has taken place all over the country and less than, within the last two weeks, we've heard that the Austin Equity Board, which is an official body of the city of Austin, Texas, is recommending to the city of Austin that because it so hates the history of Texas and its founder, Stephen F. Austin, that the city, that the capital, the state of Texas, needs to change its name. You know, where's this going to end? The board member told me that your renaming is really, the specific origin of it is that it's really a retaliatory action against the white supremacists who rallied last year in Charlottesville, Virginia. In other words, to dishonor and expunge from our history the names of men that you think are heroes to those white supremacists. I guess names like Henry Ford, Christopher Columbus, Andrew Jackson. These white supremacists are idiots and we shouldn't reward their rallying by giving them control over our lives and our community. You're just returning meanness for meanness, which I don't believe is a very good policy to model before children. There was no outcry in this community about the names of schools until someone high in this school's administration or else on this board, I don't know who started this movement, but someone high in the administration or on the board started it. But since you started your renaming campaign, it's had the desired effect that Marxists would have assigned to it and that is, for most of the year, this town's been torn apart by rancorous debate over this totally unnecessary issue. I propose that you push back against the Marxist tearing down of America and Americans by naming Site 265 the Robert E. Lee Elementary School. You know, he's got too long a great a biography to recite here, but I will say he's a very appropriate honorary for the naming of a school because he was a great educator. He transformed a staid, old Latin academy, Washington College there in Virginia, into a modern university in his five years as president. While he was president, he added courses of study in business, journalism, engineering, applied math, law, and modern language. And immediately after his death, a curious thing happened. The people who personally knew him and lived with him, who worked under him at that university, they changed, they renamed the school Washington and Lee University in his honor. Also, as an educator, he was a superintendent at the United States Military Academy at West Point. That's a fairly good item on a resume. I would ask you all to please rename the school Robert E. Lee Elementary School and that's my remarks. Thank you. I will, I have an aside. I would just say, I'm curious where we...
Mr. Williamson, your five minutes is up.
Hello, I am Scott Gregory Pitcock. I have three kids at the school that will hopefully become Council Oak Elementary. I served on the second ad hoc committee, as did my son Carter, a fifth grader at the school. I'm speaking about my own experience with the committee and about the transparent, above-the-board process that we underwent. I'm proud of the work we did. We were asked by TPS to do a lot and do it quickly. We succeeded. I believe our committee was intentionally larger, more diverse, and more connected to the public than the first committee had been and I believe these were assets. All who were on the first committee were invited to be on the second. A few people accepted that invitation. I think most did not. Being on the second committee primarily meant for both myself and my son, a lot of active listening and close reading, listening carefully to our committee peers and reading the many comments and data points that were collected at the three surets. Being on the committee also meant, in certain cases, changing one's mind, compromise, was a tricky but necessary ingredient. We couldn't move forward without it. Speaking of compromise, of the five main name options, Woody Guthrie, Abe Lincoln, and so on, I'll admit that Council Oak was not my first choice or my second. But by now, I see it as a worthy and meaningful name for our great school. I've come to recognize that it works for us. In fact, it works well. More on that in a moment. Throughout our process, several Lee names were indeed committed, or rather, considered. Those included, to name only a few, Lee Reconciliation, Harper Lee, John C.H. Lee, and Lee Elementary. These names did not advance in our discussions. None of them got any traction. Of the 20 people in our heterogeneous committee, only a few were supportive of Lee or some variation of Lee as a school name. And these people in the committee remained a minority. There was not any hidden agenda behind this reality. I think it's just that the clear majority of our committee was consistently more interested in names other than Lee, names that were more hopeful, less controversial, more progressive, less racially offensive, and so on. By far, it seemed to me that most of the committee wanted to get beyond a Lee name. Accordingly, most of the conversations amid our committee were, to my ears, routinely and refreshingly positive and forward-thinking. Our talks tended to focus on names that could be embraced and celebrated by all of our students, names that emphasized solid qualities and admirable traits, names that carried teachable moments or referenced laudable virtues. Also, our group was greatly assisted by our facilitator, Tamara. She was tireless in her attention to detail, dedication to fairness, and commitment to communication. She has a real respect for tolerance as well as diversity of opinion, so she's very good at her job. With her guidance, we mainly conversed in smaller circulating groups about what we thought and felt regarding various names and name histories, and we tended to brainstorm as a larger overall group when exploring what our own backgrounds and personalities had to do with individual biases and preferences. A thing, after all, anything, is given a name for a reason or a set of reasons, and Tamara was excellent, I thought, at helping us drill down on such reasons. She was also useful in helping us comprehend and sort through the vast amount of name data that we gathered from our surets and from the public, such as the, for example, excites and concerns that people jotted down for each of the five main names. There was much to go over on that front. Tamara's guidance was clarifying but not manipulative. In other words, she helped us hear each other out and work with each other. And in so doing, we arrived at our recommendation. Council Oak, I think, is an inclusive, historic, and Tulsa-centric name for our school. It symbolizes coming together as a community, making collective decisions for the benefit of all involved, and persevering, indeed thriving, in the face of difficulty. The tree itself stands very near our school, and that tree is actually a Tulsa icon. The Council Oak is probably as much a part of the city's identity as is the Tulsa Driller or the downtown skyline. Council Oak is a fitting name for our school. Please support it with your vote. Please help us as a school and a city move beyond this. Thank you.
Mr. Crabtree?
My name is Andrew Crabtree. I'm a TPS parent of two Lee alumni, a neighbor, and volunteer of the school. This renaming has nothing to do with racism whatsoever. It stopped being about racism for about 60% of the people after the first meeting, when it was debated and decided to remove the name of the school Robert E. Lee. For the rest of everyone else and close to 200 petitioners, it was not about race after the Lee Lite solution of removing the first name from the school was overturned. The process then went off the rails in the opposite direction. The second committee was a deck stacked against any Lee whatsoever due to members from the first committee refusing to take part in the second committee, as well as TPS stacking the committee with their own administrators and a facilitator. In addition to the board member that is supposed to officially chair the committee refused to do so, making the entire second committee null and void according to their own rules. Then you have two entirely different stories coming out of the second committee. Some say they considered Lee names; some say they were not allowed to. Looking at the published data from the first committee, we can see that over 60% supported the chop the name and half compromise. So the support for naming something like a Lee civil rights hero would have been well north of that, especially given that so many who spoke out specifically recommended consensus building Lee names. Let's say they only swayed half of the opposition by adopting the opposition's own idea. That would still put support of that name that transfers Lee into a civil rights hero at over 80%. Also, this was an improved solution compared to that of San Antonio, Austin, and Oklahoma City settled on. With this in mind, the second committee stated from this very podium just minutes ago that they did not deem any Lee-related name to be strong enough. That was a clearly deceitful statement. Everyone in this room knows the reason John C.H. Lee and other Lees were not on there was because that name, if it was considered on the ballot, would have gotten over 80% of the votes. We would all be cheering about our new name like the other schools in their video and getting ready for our 100th anniversary centennial celebration. So now we have this option to rename the school after a tree that's going to discombobulate and wreck the support structures that have been in place at this historic school. The Preservation Society is not going to let us deface our historic school building, so the school is going to confuse all the children that enter it with two different names. There's also the new controversy of the freedmen lawsuit. And as Nehemiah Frank had said, the civilized tribes were civilized because it was considered civilized to own slaves. So here we go with another probably temporary name. We're taking our best branded TPS school with the highest scores and committing the New Coke naming disaster of epic proportions that everybody's talked about. I spoke about John C.H.'s name with Greg Robinson of the Greenwood Academy, and he said this would be a great name for a new school, to which I responded, this is the flagship school of TPS. It would be better to name a great school with a large alumni following to better spread Lee's message of equity and respect. Nobody seemed to have that much of a response for this, other than to say Brady, Brady over and over, and that's unfair. Brady was a street, not a community, like a school. And that happened in the middle of the Greenwood District where they ignored their local constituents and picked a seemingly random photographer with zero message of reconciliation. If anything, that's closer to the present course we have here. This building is imposing a name on the community that is supported by less than 20% vocal as they may be. So make no mistake, we are committing another Brady decision if we vote yes on this. And again, they are picking this name over a hero who fought against fascism and bigotry. And so anyone that comes up here and is rah-rah about renaming is fighting fat racism is being dishonest with you and thinks you a fool. The choice is clear. This race-tainted name from a flawed process imposed on this school, or that of a courageous civil rights hero supported by 80% of the Lee community, a hero that has been kept off of any highway or school name for 70 years by racists, Klansmen, and most recently now this TPS board. I am sure that there will be a couple of hours of people coming up here to rant and rave about how horrible Robert E. Lee is, but that is a straw man argument, and nobody's arguing for anything racist other than possibly putting the Oak Tree name over a civil rights hero. I urge this committee to listen to the voices of now 1,162 petitioners and reject imposing this name that does nothing for our values, how far we have come in history, as well as does not align with the values of the Tulsa Public School system. Thank you.
Principal Flowers?
Good evening. My name is Aubrey Flowers, and I have the honor of being the principal at school Site 265, former Lee Elementary. I wanted to take this opportunity to speak to you, the board, this evening about the personality of our school, to remind us that no matter the outcome this evening, our school is an amazing community of learners, young and old, committed to the highest quality learning experiences for our students. And in the midst of all of this, I didn't want that to get lost. Throughout this past school year, my role was not to take sides or express opinions regarding this difficult and divisive topic. My role was to lead our school through a difficult moment in our history while also remaining relentlessly focused on our purpose. I can stand here this evening and confidently say, I believe we did that. So my words this evening will not speak to support or be in opposition of the task laid before you. That is not my role. However, my neutrality ends the moment we discuss a day in the life of our building. This school, my school, our school, is the most beautiful example of public education. Our children learn in collaborative and constructive learning environments. Our passionate and talented educators walk in partnership with our students, offering strong academic rigor while also weaving inquiry-based learning. Our families are passionately committed to supporting every learner in our community. Through the amazing support of our school families, our children are outside, learning in nature in our outdoor classroom, and our educators are never out a penny for classroom supplies or experiences. We, as a school community, are dedicated to educating the whole child academically, creatively, emotionally, physically, and socially. Our school is truly awesome. We recently celebrated some of the highest scores and gains in our district on the 17-18 OSTP. Our student attendance remains consistently high, over 96%. Our chronic absenteeism remains remarkably low, as do our in- and out-of-school suspension rates. This is our school. Regardless of tonight's outcome, as we greet our students and our families in the coming days, this is what you will expect to find and what you will find in our classrooms and our hallways. On behalf of our educators and myself, this is our commitment and this is my commitment. Thank you.
Mr. Dolinsky?
Do I just hit the button here? Oh, there it goes. All right, so tonight, I'm going to give a speech like the ones that you see in the movies and on TV shows. You know, the kind where when I'm done speaking, the person who most disagrees with me in this room is going to stand up and begin to slowly clap, being joined by everyone else in the room until it all erupts in applaud and cheer. Then, the members of the board here will tear up their recommendations and their agenda and say, well done, this is a great night for Tulsa. We all shake hands and go home. Now that I've said that, we are the future of Tulsa. We represent what you want us to be, so guide us well so that everyone can tell that a good future for Tulsa is in me. I pledge to be a good citizen, always to do my part. I will not fail you, Tulsa, because you're so dear to my heart. I learned that song in first grade at Lee School. I now live in Maple Ridge with my wife and my son. I've watched this issue evolve for almost a year now, and only now, at the very end, do I feel impassioned and strong enough to get up here and talk in front of everybody. I feel like I kind of understand why the Lee community has failed to make the case to save its very name. We've spent a lot of time arguing with each other why certain people's reasons aren't valid enough, why they shouldn't feel the way that they do, and not enough time making the case for our own community and what it means to us. So I'm going to go ahead and tell you, as a former student, 1989 to 1993, I represent those who are proud of Lee School and what it has done for my local community, a community of mostly middle and upper-class white people. To me, and everyone I can think of, everyone that I've known in my time there, Lee was never about a man in gray or what he fought for. To us, Lee School was an institution that, over the course of 100 years, has grown separate from the original sin of its founding. To us, Lee School is the collective memories of the youth who've gone through those halls, learned to become good people, and respect equality, many of whom are entirely willing to abandon the school's name and anything else they believe will help to heal Tulsa. To us, Lee School is the amazing, kind women like Sharon Atchison, Ms. Price, Ms. Clark, Ms. Jones, Ms. Creek Palm, Ms. Pauling, Ms. McCoy, and Ms. Perry, women who dedicated their lives to shaping the young future of Tulsa. The positive legacy of just those teachers alone has made Lee School into something worth preserving, not to mention the dozens of others I never knew. Lee means a great deal to me and my small community, but ultimately, Lee taught me to respect and always seek to understand voices from other communities. And so what we should have done all along, perhaps we did, and I'm not aware of it, but I ask you, the people from the community in Tulsa that has endured decades of segregation, inequality, and disrespect by people to many of whom once inhabited the neighborhood where I live today, we ask you if you can understand, accept, and tolerate what the name Lee School truly means to so many in our community. To me, as a former student, it means friendship, youth, childhood. To the teachers and those who work there, dedication to shaping young minds to become good people, working for the future of Tulsa. I know in my heart that Lee stands for something positive, not something that deserves to be chiseled off of a wall or replaced in a ceremony. Ultimately, given the history of Tulsa and the persistence of racism in America today, ultimately, that decision should be yours. Unfortunately, I don't know who or what represents the decisive voice of Tulsa's African-American community, so I don't even know where to look for a response to this. But I think it's important to get up here and tell you guys that this isn't about making excuses for the history of Tulsa. This is about what we all went through there at that school. I know it's good, and I know it stands for something worth preserving. I just wish it could persist into the future and truly become the future of Tulsa, something positive. If it has to be replaced, then that's because of something that I can never fully understand. But I have to get up here and I have to defend it because it was such a force for good in my life and my community. So thanks for hearing me out.
Our next five speakers, Mr. Paul Doherty, Mr. Mark Sanders, Mr. Nathaniel Morris, Ms. Leslie Kern, and Mr. Tommy Kern.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Guest. My name is Paul Doherty, and I am here tonight to ask you to pause on the renaming of Site Code 265. At the last board meeting, I spoke to the failed process. I've also emailed each of you individually to further define that failed process with the recent ad hoc committee that made the recommendation for the Council Oak name. I hope that you've had time to review that information and reflect on how the process failed and why a fair and inclusive process is necessary. In June, you overturned the board vote for the Lee name. At that time, you referenced significant concern expressed by the community. That significant concern was voiced through a petition. That petition had less than 200 signatures. You have now been presented with a petition with nearly 1,200 signatures requesting a fair and open renaming process. When Dr. Guest originally started the process to research the origins of school names within TPS, she stressed the importance of taking the time necessary to get it right. That process was given the time it needed to do the necessary research and make recommendations. Yet, the actual renaming process has been plagued with arbitrary deadlines to get it resolved quickly. The need to get it done quickly has resulted in one broken process after the next. It is important that you pause and take time to get this right. Lee, the longest continuously operating school in Oklahoma until the name was rescinded, has been at the forefront of the naming controversy since August of 2017. We are talking about renaming a school with a 100-year history. Taking the time to get it right is imperative. The school deserves a name that unifies the school and the larger community. The Council Oak name does not provide the needed unity. The Council Oak name is surrounded by controversy. It is tied to the Creek Indians who had slaves. You've heard about that. At the last board meeting, you received detailed information on this matter. When speaking to her vote to reverse the decision on the Lee name, Board Member Decker was quoted in the Tulsa World as saying, "If it's so hurtful to even 15% of the population, these are public schools. They serve all." I ask you, have you asked that question related to the Council Oak name? And does it pass that test? What will our students think when they realize that the school previously named for a slaveholder was renamed for a tree which has origins tied to slave owners? Who will be hurt when they make this discovery? Tonight, I ask you to reflect on the process and understand that a flawed process resulted in a flawed name. Please reject the Council Oak name and take the time to find a unifying name for the school. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Gist, I'd much rather speak tonight about bridge-building and Lee Reconciliation School, but the agenda forces me to be more direct and frankly, more negative, and I regret that. But here goes. To state the obvious, the Creek Council Oak Tree has no significance absent the Creek Nation, so naming a school Council Oak is necessarily honoring that nation. But is the Creek Nation worthy of this particular honor in the context of this year-long school naming debate, which has always been about the legacy of slavery and the Confederacy? In answering that question, the following facts are highly relevant and should weigh heavily in your decision-making. The Creek Nation was a slave-holding tribe prior to its removal from the southern states in the 1830s. As difficult as the Trail of Tears was for the Creeks, it was even worse for their black slaves, who were forced to perform much of the physical labor involved in the trek to Indian Territory. Upon their arrival here, the Creeks reestablished their national governments and reenacted slave codes. Then, when the Civil War erupted, the Creek Nation allied with and fought battles for the Confederacy. After the Union victory, the United States required new treaties that forced the Creeks and other so-called civilized tribes to emancipate their slaves and ensure them citizenship in their nations with equal shares of annuities and land allotments. Yet, as reported in the Tulsa World, a federal class-action lawsuit was recently filed by descendants of Creek freedmen against the Creek Nation for violation of the equal rights and privileges of Creek citizenship guaranteed by the Treaty of 1866. Now, I'm sure that an apologist historian could be located to say that some Creeks were abolitionists, not slave owners, that most Creek slave owners treated their slaves relatively well, and even that maybe not all the Creeks who convened under that Council Oak Tree were slave owners. Yet, if this board needs to engage in this sort of moral relativism to justify this recommendation, then ironically, you leave absolutely no rhetorical daylight between you and the proponents of retaining the name Robert E. Lee. Ms. Schreiber, you've told me that it is intellectually dishonest to suggest that Council Oak stands in any way for white supremacy and/or slavery, but that statement says much less about my intellectual honesty as it does about your own racial perspectives. You are partially correct. Council Oak does not stand for white supremacy, but your statement implies that all that matters is white supremacy, as if a symbol or philosophy of brown supremacy over African-Americans was somehow acceptable. And to say that Council Oak does not stand in any way for slavery completely ignores the perspective of Black Tulsans, who whether they are the descendants of Creek freedmen or not, may look at that tree as a symbol of involuntary servitude and of a continuing string of broken treaty promises. As I understand it, the committee did not grapple with the Creek Nation's connection with slavery and its alliance with the Confederacy. Had it done so, they might have made a different decision. So once again, we have a flawed process producing a flawed recommendation, which gets me to a point that I think we can all agree on, that fitting this renaming task into the existing Policy 8102 naming structure is like fitting a square peg into a round hole. So let's take a step back, create a new policy for renaming, then apply it to Site 265. I don't really care what the policy looks like, as long as it encourages broad community dialogue and promotes harmony in the district and the city as a whole. It also makes sense to me for the superintendent to have a larger former role in that process. The only downside I see to this pause is that the Lee School may not have a new name for the beginning of this school year, but if folks know that is because we are taking the time to do it right, is that really the end of the world? So in summary, I hope we can agree on these practical, common-sense objectives. Number one, no more names with connections to slavery or the Confederacy, period. Two, create a sensible and predictable board policy for renaming of schools. And then, three, apply that new board policy to Site 265 and be done with it, please. Thank you.
Y'all, sad this is almost over. You're gonna miss it. I wanna start by getting off track, so that's a good way to go, and wanna hit on two notes of gratitude tonight. First, Board Member Shelton, thank you so much for your service to... Yeah, please. To our kids and to our city, and for fighting for all of our kids with equity. I'm grateful to know you, and you're gonna leave some really big shoes to fill, so thank you. And the second is to someone who we all know and loved, somebody who I think we're hard-pressed to find anyone else who fought for kids with such fervor and unwavering joy and love as Greg James. He was a light to our district, and he made us all better people, and he will be sorely missed in this district, in this city. Education, this is a quote from Horace Mann, he wrote this in 1848, "Education," he said, "beyond all other devices of human origin is the great equalizer of the conditions of men." He penned the notion that education makes us equal. One year later, on September 22nd, 1849, in the state of Virginia, my home state, Robert E. Lee's home state, the state recommended for codification a group of laws. Title 54, Section 31 of this document requested that the following be put into law in Virginia, which it was, and I'll read from it. "Every assemblage of Negroes for the purpose of instruction in reading and writing shall be unlawful, and any justice may order such Negro to be punished with stripes." Education is not the great equalizer. This is what Robert E. Lee fought to preserve. This is the nation that he envisioned, where children of color could not only not attend Lee's School, or for that matter, his university, but they could not even simply learn to read the words on the T-shirt at Lee's School without being subject to being beaten. As a white man in this country, I walk through this world, as every white person does, with privilege. Privilege is the ability to believe that a problem does not apply to you simply because it doesn't affect you. You can believe it's not a problem. It's the ability to allow me and others who look like me, should I so choose, to view this as something that is nothing more than park bench names and T-shirts. It's a privilege that allows me to think that racism isn't somehow inherent to all of this. It's a privilege that allows me to remain blinded and ignorant to systems of racism and oppression that run so deep in this country, and it allowed me to do that. It allowed me to live in that world until I was pushed by people who had grace for me, until I stopped and paused and listened to people like Greg Robinson and others who do not look like me, who do not share the same life experiences as I do, but I heard their experiences and I sought to combat my own privilege. This is not about a name, and it has never been about a name. It's never been about three little letters. This is about that system of racism and oppression. It is about a system that has stood the test of time, that is durable, that is insidious, that is able to reinvent itself, and it does it right under our noses. It is a system that has lasted for centuries. The same system that enslaved people of color in this country under Robert E. Lee and others is the system that continues today. It just looks a little bit different. Nobody believes that changing this name is going to totally eradicate that system. Nobody has argued for that. Nobody thinks that. But what we do know is that it requires us to delve into our own blind spots and see and understand something that may be foreign to us. And it requires us, as white people, and I say this with respect to those who have a true emotional investment in this moment, but it requires us to sometimes accept that things are simply not about our feelings, but are about something bigger and something greater and something deeper and something larger. If you look like me, you are born with inherent privilege, and you walk through this world in it. You have the opportunity to either hold on to it and keep it and continue walking blind, or you have the opportunity to spend it to make things better. Let's make things better tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Kern, and I'm going into the fourth grade at formerly known as Lee Elementary and currently known as PS 265. I am here to encourage the school board to vote for Council Oak Elementary as the new name for PS 265. I think all the students want a final name for our school before we begin classes in two days. I would also like to tell you that PS 265 is a common noun, and all the kids probably want a proper noun, not a common noun, because that's what the teachers have been telling us all year. Even though I know that some people are probably scared that changing our name will change our school, we will still have the same awesome teachers and community and board members we've always had. I would like to give a shout-out to the third-grade teachers at PS 265, especially Miss Tree, for helping their students achieve the top overall scores for English and Math and TPS last year. They rock. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Tommy Kern, and I graduated from Lee School in 1989. My two children, one of whom is Leslie, are currently at the school. In addition, I was privileged to be a member of both the first and the second ad hoc committees, tasked with making a recommendation for the name of our school. I would like to start by saying that I do support the recommendation for the name Council Oak Elementary, but would like to talk a little bit about the process that both of the committees went through. Although I did not agree with the recommendation of the first committee, I would like to take the time to really thank all the members that served on that committee and for all the hard work that they did. During the course of the meetings, the primary discussion of names was focused on the one that had been nominated. We really focused on Lee School as a name. But in addition, there was a very rich discussion of other topics, the history of race relationships in this country, the events and Confederate rallies surrounding the initial naming of our school, the steps taken in America and other countries such as South Africa to reconcile monuments that celebrated slavery and celebrated apartheid. The point was made that no name change could take the place of the work that needs to be done to help reconcile the current values of our school system and of ourselves with the history of naming of the school and our country's history of racial oppression. Although the first committee had great dialogue, I really appreciated the second committee for a little bit more guided work in cultural competencies that focused on diversity and inclusion. I was able to listen to viewpoints that I'm not typically exposed to, and I feel that I'm a more empathetic person as a result of this process. Our school community needs to come together, and we need to heal after our name is decided. Last Friday, we had a picnic at the school. We went, and everybody enjoyed themselves. We really came together as a school, and we came together as a community, and we were there for what was important, and that's for our kids. I would encourage both our parents and our broader community to look at this next year as a year of healing and focusing on helping raise our children and educating these great children at the school. As we move forward from the healing, I look forward to the further work that needs to be done by all of us, broadening our views and understanding what diversity and inclusion means to each of us. So please, take the time, listen to each other, take this time to heal, and I would encourage all of you guys to participate in anything that might involve greater inclusion, greater diversity, and advancing your understanding. In the meantime, school starts on Wednesday, and I urge you to accept the recommendation for Council Oak Elementary. Our children want and deserve a name for their school. Fellow parents and community members, our kids are watching us. Let's show how we can come together for their good and for the good of our school. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Our next speakers will be Mr. Brian Hosmer, Ms. Brianna Dodson, Mr. Alan Branch, and
Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to say a few words about this. I'm a concerned citizen and a historian, and I stand here in full support of the change of the name to Council Oak Elementary. As I think about this, there are several issues in play that sometimes get conflated and tend to obscure, in my view, our conversation. One is context. Is the context for the Lee School slavery, or is it 1918? I think it makes a big difference. Yes, slavery was in the background, Confederacy was in the background, but the direct context for the creation of the school was Jim Crow. The direct context was white supremacy, and it was a powerful message sent to everyone in the community about who belongs and who doesn't, and that message ripples through time until today. In this context, Council Oak, yes, the Creek Nation was implicated in slavery, but Council Oak wasn't about slavery, nor was it about white supremacy. A second point, history and commemoration. They're related concepts, but they're not the same thing. One is about studying and understanding our past. This is essential to understand who we are as a people. That's history. Commemoration is where we are now and who we want to be projecting forward. It's about our values as a community as we move forward. They are related things, they're not the same thing. Third, reconciliation. Reconciliation is difficult. Virtually every monument, virtually every name that we discuss has a constituency. The feelings are deep and profound. But accounting for the past also requires a commitment to taking responsibility for that past and a responsibility for our future and where we will go, and building a future that is inclusive of everybody. Reconciliation then requires more than words, requires more than good feelings. It requires action. It is an action thing. Next point, the future. Changing names and removing monuments does not erase history. That history continues. Robert E. Lee doesn't cease to exist because his name's not on a school. It doesn't change the rich legacy of that school. Changing the name does not replace that. That still exists, and it still moves forward. What does change is how we understand ourselves as a community, and who we speak to, and whether everybody is involved and included equally. And in fact, that conversation can enrich history and enrich our community by including more voices and taking full account of who we are, who we want to be. Last point, positive note. Dartmouth, Stanford University, august institutions, once had mascots that disparaged Native people. Removing those names was contentious in those cases and in others as well, but they didn't destroy that institution. When they dropped those names, those institutions did not cease to exist. In fact, they thrive. And one of the reasons that they thrive is that those institutions, like our school and like our community, made a decision. Who are we? Who do we stand for? Do we want to talk about a divisive past? Do we want to talk about white supremacy and make excuses for it? Or do we want to talk about teachers and schools and the rich legacy and the rich contributions that everybody makes for our common good? What do we want for our future? That's what commemoration is about, and that's why I support this name change. Thank you.
Ms. Dodson.
I believe that a love of learning is essential for my kids. One of the things that I have adored about this school is that it has helped foster that love in both of my children. But learning doesn't stop when you leave school. I appreciate that this process has given me the chance to teach my kids and have difficult conversations about things like the Civil Rights Movement, the Trail of Tears, slavery, and even why it's important to speak up when you believe in something. I want to thank Dr. Decker and Ms. Schreiber for being willing to continue listening and learning and having the courage to express your change of heart. I will admit that there are many ways where I can look back and remember times where I am not proud of things I said, things I didn't say, jokes that I laughed at, et cetera. And one of the things I am most disappointed in myself for is not making a bigger deal about the portrait of Robert E. Lee hanging in the entryway. I assumed that someone else would say something or that I didn't want to be that parent that caused problems when so many must be fine with it since it was still there. When the birthday cupcake thing came home on the PTA calendar that same year, I did say something. I was quickly put in my place by another PTA parent. But I have learned a lot in the last few years by taking the time to listen to those around me. I've also learned that I have the choice to be silent when these things happen, but others who are affected by racism or who experience discrimination for things they can't choose don't have that choice. This is a function of the privilege afforded me by the color of my skin and being an ally means choosing to speak up even when it's uncomfortable. Maya Angelou said, "Do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better." Last week, we heard a lot of talk about process and I have a few things I wanted to add. I think it would be great if the board would consider adding an open forum moderated by someone trained in diversity and inclusion. I think this would have been helpful in our case to give everyone a chance to speak together. I also think it would be good if board members would encourage, would be encouraged to be involved with the parents at the schools as much as possible during this process and letting them know how they can be reached. Mr. Percival, you failed us. When parents said at a board meeting that you were difficult to get in touch with, you mocked them at a PTA meeting. And then you left without taking any comments. You never reached out to the school community as a whole. I for one still haven't received a single response to any email I ever sent you during this process. Lastly, to the Lee community. I know there are many who aren't here tonight, I hope you're watching on the live feed. It's sad, but this is the only way we're actually communicating in the same room. Back and forth editorials in the Tulsa World is not a productive way to communicate. Petitions will not help build bridges. At any point, any one of us could have tried to reach out to the community at the school to organize something. We could have spoken to Ms. Flowers to try and organize a potluck, to try and facilitate discussion, or even a timeout from the discussion. We could have reached out to the facilitator to try and request more inclusion. And I'll admit, I dropped the ball on this just as much as anyone else. We put all of our expectation into the hands of those who are running an entire district when we had the responsibility, as always, to do what was best for our own children and their education. The one thing we need to take away from this process is that we are not the community we have said we are, and it has nothing to do with names, this is what brought it to light. There have been multiple comments made in this very room that insinuate that transfers into Lee do not have as much ownership or are not as valued, and that has been the vibe I have always felt at this school. Those who have to work and can't be there for coffee on Friday mornings or can't make middle-of-the-day PTA meetings feel excluded. I've had more than one single mom or working mom friend tell me that they feel left out and treated differently. This does not foster community and it needs to change. Two weeks ago, several of our teachers stood up here and asked that we not let this year start with turmoil or without a name. While Council Oak was not my first pick, nor the first pick for either of my children, I am asking the board that we respect... Sorry. I'm asking the board that we respect the olive branch that these teachers have extended to us as they so often teach our children to do and respect their request. Let us start this new year not as a brand-new school, but as a school that is learning about our past, learning how to move forward, still learning how best to respect one another where we are, learning to listen, and most importantly, learning how to foster deeper community that is more than a hello in the hall. We need to learn to build on where we are. Council Oak Elementary could stand for community, opportunity, excellence.
Mr. Branch.
Hello. My name is Allen Branch. I am the State President of Oklahoma Resistance. I have traveled all over this country, looking at monuments, speaking engagements, studying Civil War history. Robert E. Lee never bought or sold a slave ever in his life. Yes, he inherited him from his wife's father, but as soon as they went to his property, they were free. And so I urge you guys not to change the name of the school and to leave it as it is or to change it back to Robert E. Lee Elementary. I have had the pleasure to meet Dr. Green a couple of occasions. He's a wonderful guy. And I have had the pleasure to speak with several people that live in the community, wonderful people, and they actually told me they want to leave the school alone and they were very mad at Deborah Gist for starting this and trying to change every single name within the TPS area. Thank you.
Mr. Parker.
Although a longstanding member, adopted and ingrained in the Lee community, I guess for the past five years, five to six years, I remain very much attenuated from this issue. Only through the various comments of my wife, my daughter Sydney, and my son Jase have I remained, or was I acquainted with some of the minor and major details that went on. And so naturally, as somebody who tried to remain hands-off and kind of viewed the situation from afar, I was naturally thrust into it when I was invited to be a member of the committee. As such, I immediately, my most pressing concerns were for the community itself. And I went into this opportunity with the mindset of collaboration, with the mindset of healing, mostly for the community. Because as people have said tonight, being a member of the community, you're very much aware of how important the school is to that community. As I began to do work with the committee from the very first evening, I was very much overwhelmed by the gravity and the consideration of the weighty issues. I was overwhelmed by the eclecticness of the group and everyone's willingness to take this very much seriously. And as an end result of that process, I was so honored and humbled, not only to be a part of it, but also to be a part of a city where this conversation can happen. The things that have been said tonight, I mean, they are, I respect all of them. As somebody who, I guess, may be considered a millennial, the stings of racism and hatred and bigotry don't affect me nearly as much as what they did in my parents and my parents' parents who were raised in Jackson, Mississippi. Nevertheless, those things are very much real. Those are things that, as an African-American, as a minority today, I have been taught to pay no attention to and just keep going about my way. And so I originally believed at the beginning of this process, nothing can be done, nothing will be done. But through it, I came to the realization that this was an opportunity to promote a better, not only school and school district, but a better Tulsa. And so I'm very much proud of everything that has gone on. I want to say that no matter the measure of a man, no matter the measure of an organization, no matter the measure of a tribe, we are all fallible. Some people mentioned tonight that there is no such thing as a perfect, I'm sorry, that the situation, the process was not perfect, and I'm here to say there's no such thing as a perfect process. There's no such thing as a perfect name. But we, although many of the comments are, like I said, I very much respect, they all come from subjective viewpoints, even my own. But I think we can all agree objectively that the very name Lee brings forth connotations of hatred and bigotry and divisiveness. Whatever the name may be, whether the name of the school was originally Elmo or Dora or Diego, I'm sorry, I have a five-year-old daughter, so... The memories created by the school are nonetheless the same. If any of us were to change our name tonight, we would not cease to be who we are to our family and our loved ones. And so when we have this opportunity to back away from hatred, to back away from the connotations of hatred, no matter what the measure of the actual man was, I'm sure there were good things as well as bad things that perpetuated in his life, not unlike any of us. And so I'm just here to say that I support the name of Council Oak Elementary, although that was not my first choice. Like I said, I wanted to very much be collaborative, but it was through the eclectic nature of the group, the spirit of collaboration that existed, that we came to the name, and I'm very much proud that we did so.
Thank you to everyone. That concludes our speakers on the item. Are there board member questions or comments? Ms. Marshall? Ms. Keller?
Thank you. I've been thinking a lot tonight and in the last weeks, and I was thinking earlier today about when we began the early talks about Robert E. Lee Elementary, back in June of 2017, before Charlottesville and before this hit the news media. And we knew that it was going to be a difficult and uncomfortable conversation and a very difficult process moving forward, but we also knew that it was a process that we had to commit to and we had to begin if we really wanted to live our core values at TPS. I know that there are a lot of you that are upset about this decision, both in this room and in the Lee community, and I do want to say that I'm sorry that you don't feel like the process was fair, and I want to assure you that our goal was not to destroy your school. What I will not apologize for is my vote, tonight or in the past. At TPS, we strive every day for equity, inclusion, and acceptance, and changing the name tonight to Council Oak is living our core values. For weeks, many of you have stood at that podium and have told us about all the incredible things in the Lee community, and we believe you. It is an amazing school and it's inspirational. It is a shining beacon in TPS. Very impressive, no doubt. You have built an incredible foundation, one that you should be proud of and one that I believe is stronger than the three letters above the door. Council Oaks represents a new beginning, taking the fire and the embers from the old and making them new again. It isn't about destroying a community, it's about adapting and finding a strength to move forward. I know with all of my heart that your amazing school and your incredible, dedicated, generous community will continue to thrive under a new name with the same heart and the same purpose, to help our kids be the best that they can be. So thank you all for participating in this process.
Ms. Shelton.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank the ad hoc committee, all of the members who participated. This is a thankless job. I know it was impossible to please everyone along the way, so thank you for your commitment. You've done everything that you've been asked to do and gone above and beyond that, and so I want to say that I appreciate all of the ad hoc committee members. And I also want to acknowledge that this has been lengthy and it's been messy and it's been lengthier and messier than it would have been if we could go back now and start over, having learned everything we've learned along the way about the policy, about how to involve the community effectively. And so thank you for those of you who have been patient with us in learning as we've gone along and trying to get this right. Two reasons for me, or two things I've been looking for in being able to support a name change was, first of all, that the process was inclusive, in particular of voices that were excluded the first time around when the name Lee was chosen back in 1918. And that aspect of this process has gotten better along the way, right? The first recommendation that was brought back in March blindsided a lot of people. No one knew that, or a lot of people didn't know that a committee had met. And we learned from the feedback that we got, postponed, survey went out, we gathered more feedback that way. This second ad hoc committee, though, we were able to get things a little bit more right, I think, in having a facilitator and having community charrettes. And I think an important thing about this second go-around was making it clear that this was not a democratic election of majority rules, because I think that was an important thing that we didn't clarify early on in the process, that the status quo is often to keep things the way they are, and often we won't, as a majority, be asking to change things, we won't be pushing forward, asking for discomfort. And so the fact that we were going with the majority of voices was troubling to me. If you look at the Tulsa World survey that was posted back in March or the poll that was put up, the majority of people who responded to that poll still wish that it was Robert E. Lee Elementary. There's still a lot of people in Tulsa that would prefer that it was just the way that it was before. And so in our commitment to equity, it was a commitment to perhaps go against what the majority of people would want, if that's what we need to do to send a clear statement to our kids that we value them. And so that was the second part of it. So the first part, making sure this was inclusive, but then secondly, that the statement was clear. The why matters a lot, and I think it's important that was emphasized again tonight, the why of why Lee's name was chosen in the first place. It was not about whether he as an individual was worthy of admiration, but the way that Robert E. Lee has been used as a symbol for white supremacy and that is important to the conversation, that context. And I've heard many people along the way say that growing up, going to Lee, they have come to value diversity, that Lee, their experience of education at Lee has positively affected the way that they work with people and work across difference, and that has happened despite the name on the building. And I think that's important for us to acknowledge, though, that in saying that, that we say, like, there's some disconnect between what's valued at the school and the name that's on the building. And I've heard that acknowledged by people on both sides of the issue. And so if this was in a different city, perhaps we could have moved forward comfortably with naming it after a different Lee, but all of us here are very well aware of the issue with Brady and the fact that the renaming didn't go far enough, and so it would be foolish for us to not have learned from that and taken that into consideration. And I know, it does sound like the ad hoc committee considered a lot of Lee alternatives, regardless of whether they felt like they were able to consider that. There was the knowledge that, like, they wanted to bring forward a vote or a recommendation that they felt like would get support from this board, and I think they had heard that perhaps a Lee name wouldn't because we were concerned that it maybe would not go far enough. And I've heard a lot of people say that Council Oak was not their first choice, so this was not, there was no team behind Council Oak, there's no one team that wins in this. But the why, again, the why matters. The connections between the Creek Nation and slavery are troubling, that is indeed troubling. But the why of naming this school Council Oak is not to celebrate slavery as naming the school Lee was to celebrate white supremacy, right? We want to look back at the rationale that we're, I'm going to read again, the rationale for the recommendation of Council Oak was that it symbolizes hope, the strength of the school community, the value of perseverance and unity in working to build a brighter future for children. I think about people that were displaced coming to this state, to the Indian Territory, and trying to recreate traditions under Council Oak. It was a celebration of good that they wanted to continue, and I think that that also resonates for me and what I've heard from the Lee community in wanting to preserve all that's distinct and wonderful and beautiful about Lee. Council Oak was about that, about celebrating tradition and preserving it. It's about resilience in the face of oppression, and that resonates with a lot of our students and... and communities as well, and about healing and forward-looking hope, and so I hope that we can kind of rally around those characteristics as a symbol. I know that teachers at Lee are already thinking creatively about how they can do that for their students, if that name is chosen tonight, how they can use that to really, to celebrate those things with their kids, and to look forward, and to help bring healing. So I will be supporting it tonight, again, because I think that along the way, we've gotten the process better, and that this sends a clearer statement to our kids, that we are committed to distancing ourselves completely from the original why of Robert E. Lee Elementary, and sending a new why, something for them to aspire to, in healing and hope.
Dr. Decker.
I want to begin by commending Ms. Shelton for her leadership on this issue. I admire her courage in speaking out early on. I also thank each and every one who participated in this work, whether it be serving on a committee, providing public comments, attending a charrette, attending a board meeting, or watching it online, participating in discussions and sending emails and texts, all of this on all sides of the issue have pushed each of us to learn and think. It's clear that people feel strongly on whether the word "Lee" should be in the new name. So I'm going to begin with those who want the "Lee" in the name. Many parents and teachers have talked about the amazing Lee community and school, and how much they love being a part of it, and all they've gained from being a part, and many of these parents and teachers want to keep the word "Lee" in the name. I hear a strong emotional attachment to the word "Lee." It's important to call out that the emotional attachment for nearly everyone is not to Robert E., but to just the word "Lee," and the community has shown a commitment to diversity education and equitable teaching practices. The community clearly has a strong school spirit, experienced exceptional teachers, dedicated and involved parents, and students excelling academically. But many have strong concerns about the new name having the word "Lee" in it. People have shared that the school was named Robert E. Lee to send a message that the Confederacy was still alive. In other words, this naming sent a message that there was still a belief in the moral integrity of slavery, that people of color are inferior to whites. I'm sure that had a strong intimidating impact on people of color then and still does today. People have also shared that Robert E. Lee has become a modern-day racist icon, leading to further concerns with leaving "Lee" in the name. Given both the reason for the original name, and what Robert E. Lee can be argued to symbolize today, we've heard in public comments from people of all walks of life that we must not just remove the Robert E., that to rid ourselves from the racist name, the word "Lee" must be completely removed. I've heard this in public comments, private conversations, from emails I've received, and from community input. So after listening to all of this, and lots of thinking on my part, what do I believe on this issue? I believe we all have an important role to play in dismantling oppression, and to that, we benefit greatly from listening to the oppressed and extending our hand in our listening ear. I believe that each of our schools' names are important, not just to those who attend them or live by them, but to the rest of the Tulsa public community, and maybe most of all, for future Tulsa public generations. I believe leaving "Lee" in the school name doesn't go far enough in remedying the racist origins of the name. And lastly, I believe that this has been uncomfortable and unsettling, but we're all going to be better off for going through this together. I'm confident in voting yes tonight on the name Council Oak. The committee chose this name because it is a local historic landmark, symbolizing hope and rebirth, and the beginning of Tulsa. We can certainly all connect with that message. The school community can definitely connect with the story of lighting a new fire, using coals carried from their original journey, and with resilience, rebuilding a place for all to gather and learn from one another. To me, the name Council Oak is very fitting and very poignant.
Thank you, Ms. Keller, and Ms. Shelton, and Dr. Decker, for your comments. Any other remarks? I will share a few thoughts of my own, probably some of them redundant, but I think I would be remiss in not saying thank you as well to the school community for their work on this, and that includes the students, the alums, the parents, the teachers, and the principal, who have all been a significant part of the process. The surrounding neighborhood is always active, and of course weighed in as well, as did the larger Tulsa community, and of course, my colleagues on the board, and Dr. Gist and her team have also worked together to have this difficult and important conversation about who and what we honor, and about Tulsa's history, and what it means to have different perspectives. I have to thank you for your patience as we evaluated these signs and symbols as a district and a city. It's been emotional, tense, confusing, insightful, very stressful, and most of all, necessary. Many people in this room have gone beyond their duties as citizens, TPS parents, or alums, or employees, and given of their time and self to work through this issue, and as Dr. Decker said, pushed us to think and learn, and my most sincere thanks to every single person who has engaged on this issue in any way. After this full year's worth of conversations, processes, committees, editorials, letters to the editor, texts, emails, phone calls, and many cups of coffee, two central questions still remain: Who or what do we honor, and how does this impact the success of our kids? There's two narratives possible in answering this question, or these questions. If we stop yet again and revisit the idea of including "Lee" in the name of the school, that would not impede the process of the important equity, diversity, inclusion work proposed by both committees, and the next step in this process, no matter what the name is. Some would be able to say that their traditions and connections are intact because the school still had the name "Lee" in it. In this narrative, volunteers continue to give their time and donors to contribute because the name "Lee" was kept in some form. In this narrative, however, we will never be able to tell the story of the name without harkening back to 1919, when the school was opened and dedicated during a Confederate reunion with local clansmen present. It was named at a time when monuments and commemorations to Confederate generals were being done as part of the lost cause to the Confederacy movement. We cannot leave this out of this narrative, and I have learned that through this process. When we tell that story tomorrow, will people, or 25 years from now, will people ask, and they still included the name "Lee"? Will they ask whether or not this community is welcoming and inclusive? Will they ask, did they miss an opportunity to begin a new narrative? That new narrative, or the other narrative, is that after 100 years, people came together and looked at Robert E. Lee Elementary and said, "That's not right, it doesn't feel good to let that name stand. We don't know exactly how to do it, but it doesn't feel right, and let's figure it out together." It doesn't represent who we are today, or who we want to be in the future, and regardless of all the goodness that goes on in the building, to have a landmark school that has the most remarkable academic scores this year and probably many other years, with that name creates pain and is a reminder of where the inequities that still exist today began. Changing to an entirely new name signals an acknowledgement of the city's history and the possibility of a new wave forward. As you can see, we've all thought much about this, and thank you to all of you who challenged us to do so. In the end, Tulsa's own history precludes the solution of including "Lee." Being home to one of the largest race riots and massacres, a city that was officially segregated and now is segregated by almost every outcome or measure of success, leaving this vestige wastes the chance to extend our hand and to do better and overtly recognize our history. This notion of making something right for generations of Tulsans of color was better said by Mayor Mitch Landrieu when he talked about removing Confederate statues from New Orleans. He said, "This is about showing the whole world that we as a city and as a people are able to acknowledge, understand, reconcile, and most importantly, choose a better future for ourselves, making straight what has been crooked and making right what was wrong. Otherwise, we will continue to pay a price with discord, with division." Council Oak represents who we are as Tulsans, a people that can survive, heal, begin again, evolve, and succeed. For those that feel they lost something in this change, I urge you to be inspired by the story of Council Oak, and the idea that you are extending a hand to those that found the Lee school name hurtful, divisive, and painful. To those that say we lose a flagship school if we lose the Lee name, we lose a brand, a bond, a connection, I say the only thing you lose is the name. We must think bigger than this emotional connection, we must think outside of ourselves. Nothing can take away history, neither the good nor the bad of it, and each of us will make a choice to decide how we will be part of this new era at the school. The generous people I know who have supported the school financially and with their time aren't going to quit on it because the place has a new name. They are going to continue to be the generous people they are, who care about their community, their neighborhood, their children, and their grandchildren, and they will continue into the next 100 years, creating more bonds, traditions, and successes. The community that I have grown to know through this process, and what they believe about themselves, their students, their teachers, their leaders, their neighborhood, and their city, cannot be stopped. No name or label will get in the way of the spirit and culture they have created. I know they will pursue the equity, diversity, inclusion work that they have proposed as a part of this name change, and I know they will represent well what it looks like to learn and evolve, and that is a crucial element needed for what we all care about most, the success of our kids. With that, if there's no more questions or comments, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
President.
Aye.
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 Aye. To the information agenda, which I will turn over to Dr. Gist.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. As a reminder, information items are brought before the board for consideration, they are not acted upon. If they are to be acted upon, they will come before the board again as either an action agenda item or a consent agenda item. Items G1 and G2 will be presented by our Chief of Schools, Dr. Eric Green. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Dr. Gist, Madam President, members of the board. Item G1 is a contract with Cane's Ballroom, Tulsa, Oklahoma, to host Booker T. Washington's High School's senior prom on April 6, 2019. This event is no cost, or the cost is not to exceed $6,150, and it would be taken from the Booker T. Washington Activity Fund. Item G2 is a routine item, memorandum of understanding with the Redeemer Covenant Church of Tulsa, Oklahoma, for volunteerism and support for students and families at Mark Twain Elementary School for the school year 2018-2019, and there's no cost to the district.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Items G3 through G5 will be presented by our Executive Director of Bond Projects, Chris Hudgens. Mr. Hudgens?
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, and board members. Item G3, 4, and 5 are all dealing with the construction of our new library addition at Robertson Elementary. This is a project that's part of the 2015 bond issue. This project is currently out to bid, and we'll be bringing that back our next board meeting with the contract amounts. The construction manager on this project is Nab Holtz Construction. This project's scheduled to begin in October and completed in July of 2019. Are there any questions?
If I may, I believe Mr. Huffeins has signed up to speak to a couple of agenda items. Sure, President Schreiber.
About an agenda item that already passed?
One, two, and three, yes.
Okay, can we have some guidance about how to handle that, Mr. Wade?
It's okay if Mr. Huffeins talks now about those items.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you. Peace, continued peace, yes, peace. Greetings to our Honorable Superintendent, Dr. Gist, our Madam President, Susan Schreiber, and each of our honorable Tulsa Public School Board members and honorable staff and team. We are grateful for all the teachers and citizens of this great city, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's a joy to be with you on this 20th day of August in the year of our loving Lord Jesus Christ, 2018. Yes. Item G1, recommendation: Enter into a contract with the Cane's Ballroom to host and provide services for Booker T. Washington High School's senior prom in 2019. In Booker T. Washington's autobiography, Up From Slavery, he states, "Perhaps the most valuable thing that I got out of my second year was an understanding of the use and value of the Bible. Miss Lord taught me how to use and love the Bible." And Mr. Washington also let us know, in the school he raised up, Tuskegee Institute, they had devotional exercises in chapel on a daily basis. Washington High was named after a great man. And part of the rationale for item G1, the senior prom is an annual event for the senior class at Booker T. Washington High School, that is attended by seniors and their guests to celebrate the ending of senior year. This event also gives the class of 2019 a time to enjoy each other's company in a lovely setting. Yes. G2, recommendation: Renew the memorandum of understanding with Redeemer Covenant Church, Tulsa, Oklahoma, to provide volunteerism and support for teachers, students, and families at Mark Twain Elementary School during the 2018-2019 school year. Rationale: Redeemer Covenant Church will support Mark Twain Elementary School during the 2018-2019 school year by providing onsite coordination of volunteers from the church, collecting and distributing of school uniforms, and providing and distributing incentives. This memorandum of understanding allows the church and Mark Twain Elementary School to work together to provide stability to the educational environment through volunteerism and community supports. Redeemer Covenant Church is where they believe in a conscious dependence on the Holy Spirit, and even now, Holy Spirit, you are welcome in our public schools in Tulsa, fresh and anew. Yes. You know, as teachers invest moments and read scripture and pray for students in our TPS classrooms, our students will learn at an accelerated rate to honor and respect teachers and fellow students even more. Seeing this harmony and unity among the church and public schools is, well, it's beautiful. Now, should I do G3 as well? Yes? Yes?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Congresswoman Alice Robertson opened the door for other women to get into government. Also, Alice Robertson, trailblazer, missionary, and teacher, was named head of the Presbyterian School for Indian Girls in Muskogee in 1885, which became Tulsa University eventually, where you can figure they taught students the Bible and to pray and honor God. Recommendation, enter into contracts with the lowest responsible bidders for the library addition at Robertson Elementary School. I support this recommendation. And thank you, President Schreiber, for your excellent leadership.
Thank you. So, let me just make sure, Mr. Hudgens, because I want to make sure, I know all three, G3, G4, and G5 are all related to Robertson. Were you able to fully explain each of those? Are you comfortable with that? Okay, and then are there any questions about any of the information items, actually? Okay, thank you. That concludes our information items tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. Do you have any staff reports this evening?
We do not have a staff report this evening.
And Board member reports and concerns? Are there Board member reports?
Ms. Schreiber?
Ms. Fate?
Yes, this coming weekend, excuse me, this coming weekend begins the conference, annual conference for the Oklahoma State School Board Association, and we have a member that's going to be honored with several awards, and we're not going to reveal them until they're already given to someone on Saturday. So, the next meeting, I hope that member will bring those awards and share them with the community. You can't tell who it is because everybody's grinning.
And we, at that time, we can also share who nominated him or her.
Ms. Keller?
I know we have a super big Board member report coming up, but I wanted to, real fast, take this opportunity to thank all of our support staff, not only for the incredible work that they've put in getting our schools ready for Wednesday, and to our community who has helped get teachers' classrooms ready. As a teacher, I cannot tell you how important that is and what a relief it is to have help, especially when you feel like you're up against it trying to get your room ready. But I really want to thank the staffs at Wayman Tisdale, Dolores Huerta, and Unity Academy for working so very, very hard to make sure that all of the name changes took place and all of the new stuff went in before the kiddos get there so that we can all start our school year with these new exceptional names, and look forward to celebrating the ribbon cutting at Council Oak. I would say, Board Member Percival, my advice to you, sir, is to tell them not to try too hard on the ribbon because it is very difficult to cut. Or maybe you could get somebody to prep it with a little pre-cut action for him. Thank you.
Ms. Shelton?
All right, so tonight I am officially submitting my letter of resignation to the President of the Board of Education to be effective at the conclusion of this meeting after the meeting is adjourned. It has been such an honor to serve in this capacity for a year and a half, but my little ones need more of my time this next season. I want to take a few moments to say thank you and to share some kind of parting remarks for our community. First of all, thank you to the residents of District 2 who gave me the opportunity to serve you. It's really been an honor. To my fellow Board members, it's been a privilege to serve alongside of you. Each one of you is fully engaged in this work, work that is often difficult and thankless and is certainly not well compensated. You serve because you love Tulsa and care deeply about excellence and equity for kids, and I'm grateful for your service to our district and community. Thank you for investing in me as a young professional and for also valuing my input as we've worked through various decisions and situations that we've been faced with in this year and a half. And I want to offer a special thank you to our teachers and staff, to Team Tulsa. I know the magic that happens in classrooms all over Tulsa is because of countless hours spent outside of contract hours, lesson planning and grading and answering homework questions over the phone and attending students' extracurricular activities. And so, thank you to our teachers for pouring yourselves into our students. To our school leaders, this year I've had the chance to really get to know our school leaders more and have come to better appreciate the work that you do to make sure your students feel loved and welcome and safe and that your teachers feel supported, and I'm grateful to you for that. And to all of our support staff for taking care of our kids and for supporting our teachers so that they can do the work that they do. I also want to thank our leadership team. You inspire me through your vision of what's possible and through the energy that you bring to this work. I may not have always agreed with every one of you about the best means to reach destination excellence, but never once have I doubted that each and every one of you is all in for kids, and I'm grateful for that. Best wishes to all of Team Tulsa for a great first day of school on Wednesday. And thank you to all of the Tulsans who have reached out to me in the past year or so to share your insights and concerns and offer input on difficult decisions. I'm especially grateful to those of you who have attended these meetings and perhaps spoken to this board. I hope that you will continue to do so. And I want to give a special shout out to Mr. Daryl Bright, he doesn't know I'm going to do this, but the most faithful board meeting attendee and community advocate that I know. Cubes was formed the year that I was born, and it's because of people like Mr. Bright who will never stop fighting for kids that I really am hopeful about the future of TPS. Thank you, Mr. Bright, for your faithfulness. And in closing, I want to appeal to all of us as Tulsans to stay engaged in this work and to make an effort to bring about positive change for our kids through positive means. We all want an excellent education for Tulsa kids. We want great teachers, safe schools, college-ready graduates, less predictability by race and income. What we may not agree on is how to get there. Let me name just a handful of the challenges or dilemmas that we face. There are great benefits to having a standard curriculum and standard practices in all of our schools for professional development purposes and so that our students have consistency when they transfer. But there's also great good in tailoring each of our schools and classrooms to the communities they serve. That's one dilemma. There are reasons to seek out grant dollars to fund innovative programs, but there's a challenge in sustaining those programs then when the funding runs out. There are huge advantages to promoting people internally who know the local context, have built trust in the community, but there are also times when it makes sense to bring in individuals who have gained experience in similar roles in other urban districts. There's much good in providing families with choice about where they send their kids to school and creating special programs that encourage the integration of various communities throughout our city, but there are real consequences for neighborhood schools when families transfer out. These are just a few of the types of dilemmas that we face as a board and as leadership and as a community. We will continue to disagree with each other on these and other dilemmas because they are truly dilemmas, and there is seldom a one-size-fits-all solution in education. So, I suggest that whenever we find areas of strong disagreement, we must make an effort to engage with each other face to face, like we've done in this room over the years. Because when we interact face to face, I can appreciate your humanity and you can appreciate mine. We can help each other remember that this is about our kids and that there is more that unites us than divides us. We can do the hard work together to explore the nuances of these challenges. Our kids are watching us and depending on us, and they need us to keep talking with each other, to bring our best selves to these conversations, to assume positive intent even when we disagree. I'll close by saying that our teachers need this from us, too. My first year of teaching was hard, even crushing at times, but I had to try to stay positive so that every morning I could greet my students with high fives and smiles. They were up against a lot, and they needed me to bring my best self and to be the best teacher I could possibly be for their sakes. And so, this is my final appeal, not as a board member, but as a former teacher, that even as we, as community members, recognize problems in our system and point them out and try to fix them, that we would stay positive for the sake of those like our teachers who are doing hard work and who need our help staying hopeful. If we come at this with a critical spirit intent on finding fault and assigning blame, we will undermine teacher and staff morale and sap energy and attention away from what matters most, and that will negatively impact our kids. And so, if we are truly all in this for kids, that should shape the means that we use as much as it shapes the ends that we are trying to reach together. #Team, #Joy. So, I, for one, am truly hopeful about the future, and I'll be cheering you all on from the sidelines. Thank you for letting me serve you.
Not surprisingly, Mr. Bright has signed up to speak this evening regarding the McLean Seventh Grade Academy.
Board members, Dr. Gist, this is from a February 20th letter that was written and submitted over the signatures of 14 individuals in this district, and they came out of the McLean Catchment. We are still of mind, under a coalition now, community, Coalition for Academic Excellence, that we still must keep that seventh grade center open called the McLean Seventh Grade Academy. I think it is necessary, and we think that also the eighth graders that reside now on the campus need to be put at that Alcott Center. Well, why? As we see, these are middle class, excuse me, middle-aged students. That means in terms of where they are in school, middle-school-aged children. And, you know, they're going through puberty, hormonal changes, neurological changes, brain changes, physical growth, et cetera. When we looked and took a close look at the Y's programs, at the Title I programs, this was never mentioned for eighth or seventh graders, never, never. And as we look at what's going on at McLean now with the junior high school there, as we look at the data for the last seven years, six years, the same for the seventh graders, why would we take the seventh graders that are struggling here and put them at McLean where the eighth graders are struggling also? It makes no sense. Those children need an environment, a climate. They need teachers with the capacity to teach those children who are pre-adolescent. We don't talk about that much. Also, these children are basically African-American, and we're African-American, and we care about them. So, the remedies to this, puberty, hormonal changes, et cetera, have to be placed in the context of the culture, experience, the intellectual heritage, the cognitive development, the linguistic development, and the self-identification development of African-American students. But we've got them going through these changes. The middle school is not a holding pen. These are real issues that face students at these, at this age. This is not an excuse, this is science. We've got at McLean to date, what do we have, 2% that are graduating? 2% that are college and career ready? Are you serious? We have to get those kiddos off that campus where there's incidental contact with older students. They're going through these changes, looking for love in all the wrong places many times, looking for self-identification, the incidental contact, just walking back and forth to school. Being in Trace Academy there, in-house, eighth graders on one side, high school on the other. Are you serious? No, cannot happen, cannot happen, should not happen. Whatever's best for Montessori, what you're doing with Montessori, it could happen at 46th Street North in Frankfurt for a new middle school academy for eighth and seventh graders. This is not just a question of where are we going to get the staff, how we're going to disrupt the ninth through 12th grade course offerings, as was in our response letter to our February 20th letter, not even mentioning what is going on with those kids, not even mentioning them. Here, we have 600 signatures from July to today that have agreed with exactly what I just said about those schools. Dr. Gist, you said you're listening, here's 600 voices, 600. We're still collecting. We have a lot of work to do. Well, we talked about changing the name. We've got this work to do in the real world here also, more complicated, but can be answered. For our children's sake, they must get off that campus, and I'm telling you, we've had a outpouring of support for that seventh grade academy like you would not believe. We want it there, 600 other voices want it there.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Dr. Gist, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Madam President, thank you. When the Tulsa Board of Education approved the Strategic Plan Destination Excellence in January of 2016, we set forth, as a community of teachers and learners, a clear commitment to put equity first in all we do. There is a reason that equity comes first when we talk about our core values of equity, character, excellence, team, and joy. And that's because it is fundamental to ensuring that every child has the exceptional learning experiences they deserve. This board, and I, and our team, are committed to not only lead with equity, but also to be actively anti-racist. This means that as leaders, we must be willing to confront systems and practices that are unjust and to create conditions where our Black and Brown children, and we're all children in Tulsa, regardless of learning differences, sexual orientation, gender identity, country of origin, native language, or religion, might not feel that they are affirmed or valued or celebrated as who they are. And whether we personally understand it or not, we send a clear message to our children of color when they learn in a school named for someone who would not have treated them like the amazing human beings and the precious gifts they are. So, taking on the issue of school names broadly, we knew inevitably would be difficult. These are extraordinarily sensitive and challenging issues. People have profound ties to their schools. Schools are the heart of our neighborhoods and of our communities. These are conversations and decisions where no matter what the choice is, no matter what choice or decision our board makes, someone, and actually a large number of people in any case, will be unhappy. And for these reasons, and I'm sure others, no other Board of Education has taken on this challenging issue of school names for many, many decades, even though we knew that we had schools in our community whose names were problematic. We were fortunate here in Tulsa to have a community advisory council that about a year ago took on the work of an intensive analysis of our school names to help us understand which names did not align with our core values. They also examined the considerations the board may want to use when making decisions, and they shared that guidance with the, they shared that guidance with the board last winter. We had intensive and productive and educational conversations about these recommendations and about our schools' names. And I want to say again how grateful I am that we live in a city in which our community largely understood and supported the needs to make these changes. The work of renaming was next, and it was complex and challenging for many reasons that have been discussed at these meetings tonight, before tonight, and outside of these meetings with the community and community members and board members and staff extensively. I want to emphasize how hard our Board of Education, our Tulsa Board of Education, has worked on this issue and so many others. Our board is one of the most committed groups of public servants with whom I have had the privilege to work or even to observe. I have seen and heard them grapple with the vast and disparate voices in their district communities and in the city as a whole. I know how often, for example, that Dr. Decker gets stopped by constituents when she's out running errands. I see President Schreiber answering board emails late into the night. I know how much time Board Member Shelton has spent talking with students' parents and families in District 2. I see how much Ms. Fate, and for so many years, knows her schools so well and loves them deeply. We also, of course, see Board Member Marshall, who's actively involved. I see her everywhere, I think there must be three of her. Board Member Keller, who is deeply committed to her school district, her board district, and is a graduate, in fact, of East Central High School. And of course, Board Member Percival, who not only engages deeply in policy issues but also in a hands-on way, is actively involved through Bike Club, through being a crossing guard, and so many others. And in addition to all of those responsibilities, but the deep work of policy and program and engagement with data and trying to make the school district better every single day, Board Member Marshall's Board Members Marshall, Keller, and Percival each chaired school naming committees. This took additional significant time out of their incredibly busy schedules to work side-by-side with their school communities. And throughout the last year, they and other board members and our board leadership in particular have listened to constituents and community members with many thoughts, many ideas, many beliefs, and many feelings from all, for every, that you can imagine and that you've heard here in these meetings, from let's just number our schools, why does this need to be done, as well as it needs to be done right away, it should have already been done, here's the name I like, here's why my idea's the best, this process is amazing, this process has been terrible, all over the place, and including, and so many people who have indicated their enthusiasm for the name that the board considered and approved just a moment ago. Our board is engaged in incredibly difficult conversations. They have been leading with an unwavering commitment to equity. They've made decisions that they know will please some, but will also likely disappoint some of the people they serve. I've been proud and humbled by the work of this board, as they have, no matter what, stayed grounded in what matters most, our children. And I know that when we look back on tonight's meeting, 10 years from now, or 50 years from now, or 100 years from now, we can say that our Board of Education did the right thing for Tulsa and for Tulsa's children. I also want to acknowledge what has been mentioned here tonight, a terrible loss that we had in Tulsa Public Schools. A very close member of our family, one of our leaders, Greg James, who was the Executive Director of our Office of Exceptional Students. We lost him to this world last week, and that has been very challenging for so many of us in the Tulsa Public Schools family. We will have services tomorrow at Memorial High School in the auditorium at 4:00. Ms. Shelton, thank you. I want to just, again, join the chorus of acknowledgement of your service. I'm so grateful to know you, hope to continue to be able to work with you in other capacities, and I'm just very grateful for your service. And then, lastly, I just want to say, we are T-minus-one days before, if we don't count today since it's nine, before the first day of school, and we are going to have an awesome kickoff to our school year. It's going to be, as I said earlier tonight, a particularly spectacular night, which makes a tongue-twister. Our support staff, our teachers, our school leaders, everyone and the team has been working extraordinarily hard, from making sure that school buildings are ready, school classrooms are ready, curriculum and lesson plans and communication avenues, we have a new website, everything that we've launched to make sure that we have bus routes and schedules, and just the list goes on and on in terms of all of the things that have to happen to make sure that we are fully ready to have an awesome year. And we know that all across the city, parents are scrambling to make sure that their own families are ready with uniforms and supplies and schedules and so forth. Know, families, that we appreciate all you're doing to make sure your children are with us on Wednesday, fully ready for their school day. And please check out our new website to get all the information you need about schedules, bus routes, menus for lunches and breakfasts at school, school supplies, and just really everything that you could possibly need. We are only about five vacancies in terms of teachers, which is amazing, given the really massive teacher shortage we have in Oklahoma and continue to have in Oklahoma. But we will have a certified educator in every classroom base because we will be using any members of the district staff as we need to while we continue to recruit. So, we are grateful to our team for that commitment, and overall, I'm just enthusiastic about the special day that we're going to have on Wednesday and look forward to seeing each of you on our first day of school. That concludes my remarks. Madam President?
Thank you, Dr. Gess. At this time, I am going to recommend that we accept the resignation of Ms. Shelton, Board of Education Member representing Election District Number 2, to be effective immediately following the adjournment of this meeting and declare such office to be vacant. Further, the Board of Education should receive written applications until August 30th, 2018, from qualified persons applying for appointment by the Board of Education to the vacant position created by Ms. Shelton's resignation to serve until the next succeeding election in 2019, at which time the office will be placed on the ballot for the balance of the unexpired term. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved.
Do we have to?
She's going to win.
I abstain, I guess. I don't know.
I will second.
Heavy heart.
So, before I call for the vote, I just, first of all, want to acknowledge the Boy Scouts who, like good Boy Scouts, have stayed here to the bitter end of the meeting. We appreciate you all. And I hope that you have learned a lot this evening. This was a great meeting to be able to attend. And so, but before we vote on accepting this motion, I know that I speak for the whole board when I say that we all wish Ms. Shelton and her family the very best. I have to say that Tulsa is losing something. I don't think, really, any of us knew what we were getting in this smart, thoughtful, kind, curious, and very detailed young person. She kept all of us on our toes, asking smart, hard, thoughtful questions, and inspired us to think differently, and showed us what information was available when you really dug through all of the minutes and everything that's out there. Secretly, I kind of hope that she'll still read the published agenda and send in questions for us after she's gone. We will miss her. I thank you, Amy, for being here with us and especially during this time. At that, unless there's any other comments, I'll go ahead and take a call for the vote on the motion. Ms. Fate?
Aye.
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 Aye. And with that, I'll go ahead and just discuss the application process for her seat to, for at least six months prior to the date of the application for appointment. This means that you need to live in the district for six months and be registered for six months. You must hold the minimum of a high school diploma or a certificate of high school equivalency, and you cannot be employed by Tulsa Public Schools or related within the second degree, meaning a spouse or partner of someone to any district employee or member of the board. The appointment to the District 2 Board seat will run through the spring of the 2019 School Board election. If the appointee seeks to serve the entirety of Board Member Shelton's term ending in 2021, he or she will be required to run for election in 2019. The district runs across the corridor here from Pine on the north to 11th Street on the south, and the schools that you represent include Booker T. Washington High School, Carver Middle School, Will Rogers Junior College High, I'll say it again, Will Rogers College Junior High and High School, Kendall Whittier, McKinley Mitchell Owen Sequoia, and Springdale Elementary Schools. Application must be submitted online via email to the clerk of the board or by hand delivery to the Service Center here, 3027 South New Haven, no later than 4:30 PM on August 30th. So, the appointment to the District Board 2 seat runs through spring 19 School Board election. If the appointee, again, seeks to serve the former Board Member Shelton's entire term, you have to run in 2019 to be elected to serve until 2021. All applicants will have the opportunity to provide five minutes of comments at the Board of Education meeting on September 4th. I think, is that correct? Or is it on a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. Yeah. So, it's not on a Monday, it's a Tuesday. And hopefully, all of you know that are watching out there or hear that tonight, the board meetings are at 6:30 here in this room. And the applications are available on our website at tulsschools.org, and then you're going to click on the upper right-hand. Are we going to show this portion of it? There we go. So, you're going to click on the upper right-hand right there where it says "About the District" and then "Board of Education." And you're going to scroll down, and you'll click on "Board News and Updates," and then click on the orange box that says "District 2 Board Application." And you can either do it via electronic application or the downloadable TPS site, or downloadable PDF, excuse me. Okay, so that is how you make application. If you have questions, or if you, and please share this with your neighbors, your friends, people that you know that might be interested. The qualifications of a school board member, there are minimum qualifications, but other than that, if you are a lover of public school, you are qualified. Everyone brings different perspective. There isn't something special that you have to have. Everyone that comes to this board comes from many different backgrounds, and so I encourage everyone that has the minimum qualifications and is thinking about it to apply. It really is an honor to serve, and it's a place where you feel very up close and personal to the people, with the people. Is there any new business, Mr. Wade? No new business. I'll go to the announcements. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, September 4th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Cheryl Selman Room at the Education Service Center, 3027 South New Haven Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'll call for the vote, Ms. Shelton.
Can I vote?
You can vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Meeting adjourned. If I had known Board Member Shelton could vote, I would have let her make the motion.